Ladies and gentlemen, good evening, welcome. It is Tuesday, September 6th, 2022. School is back in session, as is the Board of Commissioners for our regularly scheduled work session before tonight's meeting, immediately before tonight's meeting. We held an executive session. At that executive session, we discussed several legal matters relating to the township. Would you call the roll, Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondek.
President.
Commissioner Forstie Grubb.
Here.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Here.
Commissioner Cavender.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner Wexler is on vacation. Commissioner Trombetta.
Here.
Commissioner Holmes.
Here. Chief Biola, would you lead us in the pledge? First.
[inaudible]
Thank you, Chief. Thank you all. First item on the agenda, I invite before us Scott Selkowitz, Chairperson of the Senior Advisory Council, who will be discussing the Senior Advisory Council Survey and other activities.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Is this on?
It is.
Good. On behalf of the Senior Citizens Advisory Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak once again this evening. The Senior Citizen Advisory Council was charged with the responsibility of advising all of you, the Board of Commissioners, on matters relating to the overall well-being of seniors residing within the township. However, in order to properly advise, you need information, you need data, you need facts. As we were reorganizing as a council, doing our necessary due diligence, it became abundantly clear that we needed to reconnect and, in many instances, connect with township seniors. We concluded that we must develop processes to assess the current needs, wants, concerns, ideas, and to solicit the input and recommendations of township citizens 65 years of age and older. This year, learning would supersede advising. Therefore, in order to amass and evaluate such data, we needed to focus exclusively on outreach efforts. The council then determined that outreach would be accomplished along two separate yet intersecting paths. The first, through a carefully crafted Senior Citizen Survey Needs Assessment, which are roll-out tentatively scheduled for October. And there'll be more information being presented to you regarding the survey, which, by the way, is over four months' worth of work. We're very happy with the product, and we feel you will be as well. And second intersecting path for outreach is through an open house event entitled Havifer Township: Your 65+ Community. So I'm here tonight to formally announce this very special event. On Wednesday evening, October 19th, in this very room, and that room, and that room, with the support of the Board of Commissioners, thank you, the Havifer Township Senior Citizens Advisory Council was holding its first open house for township seniors entitled Havifer Township: Your 65+ Community. This event is an opportunity for township seniors to meet and interact with council members to express their wants, needs, concerns, ideas, information that ultimately could lead to outcomes having a more immediate, tangible, and positive impact on the lives of people aged 65 or older residing within the township. Equally as important, this event also provides opportunities for folks to get out and meet new friends and neighbors, opportunities to connect with someone who shares similar interests, skills, expertise, ideas, and the like. In addition to our guests meeting and interacting with council members, invitations will be extended to the leadership of the library, Parks and Recreation, the Evening School, and to Kelly Music, which was a Fall 2022 ARPA Grant Awardee. These representatives will be invited to join the conversations and discussions of that evening, to share their respective program and service offerings specific to township seniors, and to gain feedback from our attendees. Besides the camaraderie, our guests will be treated to a variety of hors d'oeuvres, desserts, and light refreshments, expertly prepared by Carlino's, with background music provided by the pianist, Mr. Kurt Martin. As indicated in the announcement, which I believe you have in your packet, there is no cost to attend, but this inaugural event is limited to 100 people. Therefore, participants must RSVP in advance. Registration will open on September 26th, with a deadline set for Friday, October 14th, at 4:00 p.m. It's a three-week window. Registration will occur online through Sign Up Genius, to be accessed by logging onto the township website under HT News Plus and clicking on the link to sign up. For those neighbors who do not have Internet access or do not wish to register via the Internet, they can call the township to speak to a front desk representative who will assist, and that number is on your announcement. While the announcement for this event will be featured on a township news website with hard copies that are going to be left at the Krec Library and at Kelly Music, I come before you to ask that all of you share this information with your constituents as close to or on September 26th, which is corresponds to the opening of the registration. And again, I do believe you have this handout, which is, I don't know, as a resource for you. The council hopes that this event becomes the first of many to keep our seniors engaged, allowing their valued voices to help guide our social, educational, and community efforts in Havifer Township, guiding the council to hopefully move from learning to advisement accordingly and appropriately. Thank you for your continued support and dissemination assistance. Any questions or comments?
Mr. President? Thank you for your work putting together the survey, and also for all of the planning that has gone into this event on October 19th. When will the Sign Up Genius become available so that we can start sending out this information? Kind of like a save-the-date sort of, I guess, information out to people, if you know what I mean?
I believe that the registration is going to open the 26th, correct? September 26th, that's going to open?
Good, so we could say, please, please think about, there's going to be a Senior Citizen Open House on October 19th, there'll be registration later, could we send out that information? Would that be okay?
Sure.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any other questions for Mr. Selkowitz? Mr. Selkowitz, thank you for your presentation and for your service to the township.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we'll hear from the township's favorite engineer, Dave Penoni, who will discuss traffic calming. And after that's over with, if he still has the stomach for it, he will also discuss the model stormwater management ordinance.
So a couple meetings ago, we had talked about revisiting traffic calming and the basis of it, and a presentation that we had done earlier as a collaborator with Larry and Dave and I mentioned that in '08, we had done a presentation, uh-oh, where'd it go? Lost it. Are you guys, is it on your guys' screen? It's not on the big screen. Here, coming back. There we go. All right, thanks. And so we took the, oh, it was actually '09, presentation, good presentation, pretty solid. Oh, I did that. Sorry. And updated it, it wasn't broken, so we thought we'd update it and update it for August of 2022 presentation. And I'll go through it at the sum, I won't go through every single page, but a couple of the points of the update, PennDOT updated their traffic calming book. The original book was published in '01, and then they made revisions in 2012, not comprehensive, overwhelming revisions, you know, technology hasn't changed traffic calming, there's no AI of traffic calming now, so good fundamental stuff. I still held a few examples of what we did in the past in the presentation, I'll go over them briefly, added a few new ones that we did and gave a little history, I know we have, we have traffic calming ordinances that we adopted and then revised. And then the last thing, and I won't go over them, but I put them in for the board's edification, I added at the end of the whole presentation, traffic calming ordinances from our neighbors, specifically Lower Marion and Radnor, just because I know, I know we'd like to know what our neighbors are doing, and I thought that might be, might be helpful. So I did reference, there are two books, Traffic Calming Handbook and the Traffic Calming Statement of Practice. Traffic Handbook is prepared by PennDOT, frankly, it's a very good document, we find it to be very helpful. The IT, the Institute of Traffic Engineering defines traffic calming, and it's physical measures to mitigate, reduce the negative impacts of motor vehicle use. Attended to address speeding, cut-through traffic on residential streets. Benefits speak for themselves, and again, I'm not going to read the slides, because the board can certainly see them and read them, but we're talking about safety, we're talking about safety for pedestrians and bicycles, quality of life, and most of the intent, very important, the intent is to self-police, the intent is for them to be something that doesn't require active monitoring and policing on a daily basis.
Can we ask questions during your presentation, or should we save them for the announcement?
I could do whatever you prefer. I like the enduring, but it's up to
I have just a really quick clarification on the last slide, so you say improves quality of life, so what does that mean exactly?
Well, I'm going to give you one answer that comes right out of the PennDOT handbook.
Great, perfect.
So speaking on behalf of the state of Pennsylvania, I think anytime, I think it's fair to say anytime we enhance and improve safety, and reduce cut-through traffic, and reduce speeding, the, we would like to think that improves quality of life for a neighborhood. If you have less people cutting through, coming, look, I live right off of township line, if township line's not cutting through my neighborhood and going back to Draxalav, and they're standing at Draxalav, I think that would, it's fair to say that improves the quality of life.
Yeah, it's less noise.
A little bit of a subjective.
Yeah, less noise, less pollution.
Yep.
Safer for pedestrians, yeah, thanks.
Factors we consider, we consider these every day, every time we do any kind of infrastructure improvements, which we're typically involved in any improvements, we're always considering funding, we always want to be careful about maintenance costs when it comes to traffic calming, snow removal is something that never goes away, so we always have to be cognizant of that. And if you look at the bottom two, which are kind of engineering ones, we've got to be very careful we don't put traffic calming in because it's a physical change, it takes water from this point and puts it over there and inadvertently hurts somebody. And one of the examples you're going to see talks about how we could have possibly inadvertently redirected traffic. Redirecting traffic is something we're very sensitive about, I will tell you, we work with the police on a regular basis on all this, and we're always careful about taking traffic off of my street and put them on your street inadvertently. Safety, right, we've always talked about emergency service providers, there is a documented delay on speed humps, documented delay on traffic calming circle, the precautions. Where do we use them? We see them mostly in the local residential streets, sometimes we'll see them in the collector streets that are primary residential, and we don't really see them here, but sometime you'll see them in downtown districts, at least we haven't seen them yet. The downtown districts will take the speed limits up to 40, the other two states, you'll see, they stay at 25 mile an hour for the limits. Real straightforward traffic calming methods, and again, this is right out of the PennDOT manual, it sounds basic, but you park cars on a street and that calms traffic. The traffic circle, we have those in Marion Manor East, right Kevin? Mostly in the east.
Yes.
Yep. And we've, the townships put them in, they went in decades ago, and we've even enhanced them and put them in more recently. We don't really have too much in the way of chicanes, and we have a few bump outs, we have the speed humps, right now, the speed humps, I believe the only two permanent installations are Steel Road and Highland Avenue up by the church, and Steel Road through the golf course, then we put a lot of temporary speed humps down, I shouldn't say a lot, we put speed humps down in certain situations. Chokers, we like to choke traffic, and one of the examples we're going to show there is a different way, we didn't choke them with permanent changes, but to slow people down. These are all passive. Selecting the appropriate measures, and again, it's a good basis, good PennDOT work, type of roadway, the site conditions, one size doesn't always fit all. Four categories, horizontal deflections, a vertical, the obstructions, and the pavement markings, and we've used, we've used almost all of these. Speed humps speak for themselves, right, everybody, by now that everybody sees speed humps. Those are the speed cushions, they just don't go as far across the road, we really don't see them too much. Steps for traffic calming, and our ordinance sort of mirrors this, resident input, field data, come up with some different, possible different solutions, and then prioritize, prioritize solutions or projects. No way I'll walk through this, but this is the flow chart that PennDOT had in their first manual and the second manual, good intentions, but it shows you could really, you could really go through a lot of steps if you want to. Our ordinance, so it's good, the township of Havifer is one of the first townships, was on the early side of adopting the ordinance, we first adopted it in 2005, and then revised it in 2012. So with the first study being done, handbook coming out in '01, about four years later, we prepared a traffic calming ordinance, and then we updated it in '12, which is, which was a little bit before, right around the time of the second, of the second revisions to the handbook. Even looking at it, and Chief pointed out to me, we're a little dated here, at the time, we had a safety director, that position since it doesn't exist in Havifer Township, but it follows the criteria set in the handbook, and it follows it pretty well. So I did pull out some, not everything, but some relevant points. We expect, we expect when there's a traffic calming or speed up installation is being considered, all the households on the street, we expect them to be notified, the recommendation is 80% support of all households impacted, if it's a cul-de-sac where it's a sole access for a street, that number goes down to 60%. The posted speed limit identifies criteria for speed up, you can see that in the bottom half of the chart here, the posted limit, speed limit should not be greater than 25 mile an hour, and the 85th percentile must be at least five miles an hour higher than the posted limit. PennDOT recommends 10. And one of the changes we made from '05 to '12 was we took that number down to 5. The ADT, the average daily traffic on the road, PennDOT recommends it be at least 1,000 vehicles with a peak hour of 100. In the '05 ordinance, we didn't have a, we didn't have a volume criteria in there. Length of the street should be at least 1,000 feet, and you can see the spacing, 250 to 600 feet apart, and no more than 150 feet from intersection roadway, and 250 from signalized intersections, we reduced that from the 300 that was in '05. And then do we just note, we note some of the concerns and challenges, if you put them on hills and curves, that can get a little bit dangerous for maneuvering vehicles, and even drainage can get a little bit tough sometimes. These are copies of the ordinance, and they're in the presentation, that everybody can look at it, I pretty much summarized them previously. And there's the 2012 ordinance, I'll go through three examples really quickly, and they've held up from the test of time. This is the Pilgrim Gardens neighborhood, and we have Vermont Road, which is a state highway, which had a lot of, has a lot, had and has a lot of two-way traffic, but we're getting a lot of two-way traffic coming up and down Warrior Road, and a concern about a lot of cut-through traffic coming into this neighborhood, that people were coming up Vermont Road, cutting through Warrior to get back onto Vermont Road. Sometimes there's a perception of cut-through, sometimes there really is, so we did a, we did a license plate count, which is, which is much easier to do now, but back then it was all manual, and determined that there was documented cut-throughs. And through a series of public meetings, now we call them charrettes, I guess, but we had public meetings, and there's more than one, in the binary firehouse, we came to a relative consensus that modifying the bottom of this road where Warrior meets Vermont to not allow people to come up the road, only down to Vermont would reduce the cut-through traffic in half. And it did. So it took, it kept, it kept cut-through traffic back on Vermont and Glendale, off the residential street where it was not intended to be. Look, not without some people being unhappy, there's still some people unhappy about it, but it did, it was vetted, it was documented, it was constructed, and it was checked afterwards, and the results, and it did reduce cut-through traffic.
One, one quick question, could you define Collector Road for people who are listening in?
Ooh, I should be able to exactly define that, but I'm not going to be able, residential roads are roads in front of my house, Warrior, Vermont, the Collector Roads are those where you leave the residential, and you go on to the Vermont Roads, the Eagle Roads, and then you have your high volume roads like Township Line and West Chester Pike.
That's a great definition, in layman's terms, thank you.
There's a better textbook definition for that, but pragmatically, there are collectors.
Steve, I have a quick question. You made reference to, you know, Vermont Road, State Road, and there are a variety of state roads throughout the township, what is, what is the interaction between, you know, our traffic calming efforts and the state?
It'll run the gamut, there's, there's times when some of our traffic calming could have no impact on a state highway or to state use, and we don't need to collaborate with them. There are times when we're right contiguous with them, and we'll have to work with them clearly. We have, Dave and I were just on a call with a PennDOT representative, Frank Hady, who's been very collaborative with the township in the past. It's reactive, it's us going to PennDOT, it's not PennDOT coming to us, but I would say they may not always give us the answer they want, but they never turn a deaf ear to us. If we want to make a change, like this required a state permit, because, because Vermont's a state road, and we were going down it right away, and they worked with us, and they did not prohibit us from making this change. And the next example I'm going to show is going to show another one where we had to collaborate with the state.
Is there any requirement, it sounds like there's no requirement that if they're do, if they do any kind of traffic calming features on a state road, do they have to notify us? Or, I mean, do they, as a matter of professionalism, give us a heads up, or how does that work?
That's a good question. I would say that, and boy, John, you jump in if you think I'm missing this, I would say that as a matter of professionalism, it's unusual for the state to make changes that could impact us without giving us a, at least a heads up, a courtesy call. I can't tell you that they're always looking for our approval, but we're pretty collaborative with the state.
Yeah, they will usually get a notification, as Dave said, it's not so much they're going to ask for our approval, but we normally are notified if there's going to be a major change. And they don't do that much traffic calming because of the way the state highways are constructed here in the township.
Yeah, state highways aren't meant to be traffic calming, they want the traffic on the state highways, not to pick on people who live from Vermont Road, but they're built, they're wider, they have better curves, they have better drainage, we want people on those So the other study we did around the same time was, was the area behind Menno Shopping Center, and there was, there was a big concern of cut-through traffic coming through that area, there was a perception that because of this intersection was, was back, we all know this intersection backs up going east in the PM, people were coming through, they were cutting in, they were cutting through, and they were going to Eagle Road. I thought for sure people were doing that. Again, we did a license plate study, and we were not getting cut-through traffic, that was empirical, we were not getting people entering this neighborhood, and it was easy to do the study, because they only enter in one place, cutting through and leaving a neighborhood, the people turning left here were going into a neighborhood, they live there, and vice versa. That's why it's good to do the study.
And just to clarify for anyone who's watching, just because, having spoken to people on Briarwood, they probably wouldn't agree with you, agree with your statement, when you say there's no cut-through, or there's not substantial cut-through, I believe, that's based on the definition, as is in the ordinance, which is based off of the PennDOT regulation? That's an empirical number?
Yeah, it's an empirical number, and it is a 15-year-old number, I mean, it's always possible that traffic patterns have depreciated in much along West Chester Pike that has bumped back up. So it's, this study wasn't done yesterday.
Oh, so the Briarwood study is 15 years old now?
Probably a little bit less than 15.
Less than 15.
But, but there, this backup's been here for, as long as I can remember, I mean, he's bound, and the PM's always been a little bit rough. But one of the things that we looked at, and actually was, and John will remember this, there was a one-way installed on one of these roads, I can't remember which one it was, prior to doing this study, and all they did was push one-way traffic, push traffic on another road, that one-way sign was down in five days. So it's inadvertently pushed traffic off of one street onto another street. Good intentions, but that's why we got to be careful where we push traffic. What we ended up doing here, we found there were some speed issues, and if you, do you remember how big and wide open that intersection used to be at West Chester Pike? It used to be a big sweeping curve coming off of West Chester Pike onto Briarwood. And we put in delineators and made that a much sharper turn, so it couldn't turn in quickly, and turn right quickly down Briarwood, and then that worked, it slowed, it calmed down the traffic, didn't push people on other streets, but it calmed down the traffic. And, and again, part of this is to slow people down, not just to, not just to take, cut-through traffic away. And then when that worked on a temporary basis, we eventually went in and installed that on a permit basis, you see it in this picture, how we installed that. Great cooperation from the neighborhood, great cooperation from the property owner. These are just two quick ones of recent, if you look up traffic calming, you're not going to see a textured crosswalk, but we put in a textured crosswalk at both the middle school and at Sacred Heart School, and both of those, frankly, what they do is they enhance some existing traffic calming, they have traffic calming to slow people down at the schools, the visual of these crosswalks we installed enhance the ability for traffic calming to slow people down, and draw attention to the crosswalk. Typical cost of speed ups, $5,000 to $10,000, they haven't gone up that much, and again, we have the four permanents, I do want to point out the temporary ones that we install do have to come up in the wintertime, because when you've got a plot of snow on a street, you can't leave those down. Typically, John moved, I think we typically take them off in the beginning of December. We already talked about, about most of this, how we implement and pursue the traffic calming.
Can I ask a question related to cost?
Questions?
Oh, good, excellent. The differentiated crosswalks in front of the middle school and Sacred Heart are really quite effective, but I also know they're kind of expensive. Would you be kind enough to sort of explain why they cost as much as they do, and what the ballpark figure is for these things?
Boy, Dave, do you remember what we paid at Mennoa? I think we paid, Dave, you don't remember, I think we paid $40,000 to $50,000 at Mennoa, maybe a little bit less, you know, you're taking an error, oh, oh, the other thing is, both of them needed handicap ramp upgrades, so half of that cost was any, if you don't have to do, when you're putting in crosswalks these days, you're almost always upgrading handicap ramps, and frankly, that's, that's more expensive than, than the textured paving. And that's, that's a little bit what we're looking at on Mennoa Road by the crossing we might pursue over by Chatham, with a crosswalk there, we think we're going to have the handicap ramps. The textured paving itself is probably about half of that cost, for some reason, I think it was $40,000, $50,000, maybe half of that was a textured paving, but the paving gets, I hate to diminish the paving part of it, but it does get dwarfed by the ramps, ramps are expensive, very expensive to design, frankly, and very expensive to build, and they're very heavily regulated. So it's, the bang for the buck on a crosswalks is there, it's just you've got to be careful about where you land them. So they're probably maybe double the cost of regular paving, maybe three times the cost of regular paving, but paving costs, so maybe, maybe, I'm saying the one, I'm going to test my memory and say maybe $20,000, $25,000 in Sacred Heart, and the other half of that was handicap ramps.
So if we wanted to install more of these, we would want to put together probably a list of priorities, and then work down that list?
I'm a little bit, I have a bias towards them, I like them, I agree, I think they work well, they're nice visually, you're not going to find them in the handbook, but they do draw attention, list of priorities is always good, that's what we talk about in the ordinance, is to prioritize, and we have the traffic calming committee can look at it, and then of course, Dave and everybody come up with costs, but again, we have to be very sensitive about where they drop, where they fall, because of the, because of the handicap ramps. Right? There's a bunch of stuff in the back of this that I'm not, that I'm not going to go through, all the way in the back is our neighbors' ordinances, again, I know we like to, we like to look at our peers, Radnor and Lower Marion both have ordinances, Upper Dart because of the, because of the, the handicap ramps. Right? There's a bunch of stuff in the back of this that I'm not, that I'm not going to go through. All the way in the back is our neighbors ordinances. Again, I know we like to, we like to look at our, our peers. Radnor and Lower Marin both have ordinances. Upper Darby, I believe, does not. Marple, I know, does not. By policy, Marple says if we wanted to, if somebody wants traffic calming, we go to the handbook, default to the handbook. These other two ordinances are relative. I didn't go word by word, but they're all relative. They're both relatively similar to what, to what we have.
But Dave, they're similar in the number of cars and the length of the street?
Yeah, but I did not side by side them. They're similar in order of magnitude. Uh, look, for, just for example, at Exe, Lower Marin, they put the project ranking right in the ordinance. We don't do that. Radnor doesn't do that. So you'll, you'll see, there are some anomalies and idiosyncrasies of, of, in both towns. But, and, and frankly, I didn't put it up there. Like at Conkers, Conkers is scaled way back. Geez, Aston has like a, like half the handbook for their traffic calming ordinance. But we're, we're very much the norm. We have a nice concise ordinance that, that's easy to follow. That's everything I had. Any, any, if there's any questions or more questions or?
Mr. Penone? Have you or the state looked into painting as a way of traffic calming? For example, I've seen in Seattle, they've used painting in unique ways to calm traffic. And has that shown, have you looked into whether that has any success?
At the top of Vermont and Warrior, there's a horizontal and vertical curve. So if you're coming up from Glendale Road, very, very difficult section. We gourer striped to narrow that road at the top. We did put some delineators down there, but the heavier part was the gourer striping, the striping, the painting. And there's another section out, um, up in the St. Dennis area that we have, and I can't remember the name of that intersection, but it was a big wide open intersection where we did the same thing. So we, we try to take some of our bigger paved areas. And if we think we can narrow them with, with the striping and painting, we've done that. And it's been successful. Sometimes we'll put those delineators down there also that if you hit them, you, you whack your car, but they knock down.
Ellison paddock like that?
Ellison paddock, exactly. Yep. That was a big wide open intersection.
If I can have a follow-up to that, have you ever considered mural? Um, so for example, again, in Seattle, they do kind of like flowers and murals in the street, which I imagine, check it out. It's really interesting and I, I, I haven't done enough research to know if it's actually effective. Please tell me.
I'll tell you, uh, we, they have those in media where I live.
Oh.
Murals, and they've painted some of the sidewalks and put, not sidewalks, but some of the areas adjacent to the curves where the crossings are, and they've put in some delineators. Not sure how that's going to go long-term, but they're giving it a shot.
Yeah, I'd be interested. You know, I'm thinking about some of my streets in Maryland Park, for example, where I've gotten consistent concern about speeding. And part of my thought was maybe if we did a mural that shows that this is a family-friendly neighborhood, it would, you know, maybe brighten up the street, but also hopefully calm down the traffic by making people slow down and look at the mural.
I'll tell you even a little bit back, that's a little hilly, that neighborhood, right, if I remember?
Yes, there's definitely some hills. Uh, that was something to consider.
One thing to keep in mind when it comes to these proposals, there's not just the, the study that's required to figure out what's the right thing to do. There's also the implementation and then finally there's long-term legacy costs because you're going to have to repaint them over time.
And I will make a plug for your police department. We, we get less and less involved in it because your police are very proactive and very up to date on it. And we tend to get called in on maybe ones that are a little trickier, but these guys, these, the more straightforward ones, they run with them a lot and they run with them well. And I can't say that in every town.
I have another question. So when you drive down Darby Road, there are, it's not a bike lane, but it's called something where there's a little bit more room if you are riding a bike? Yeah, what's it called?
The buffer lane.
So how does that fall into the traffic calming stuff that you just showed us?
I don't think, don't forget the state highways. You don't put traffic calming on a state highway.
Okay.
I think it's two separate issues. I mean, it's a, it's.
When, when it was going to be repaved, we reached out and worked with the bike coalition and talked to PennDOT about trying to put those on there. So they're not official bike lanes, but.
Right. Yeah, they give you more space on the road if you're not traveling in a car.
And, and there's been a push through the years, um, just when a road gets repaved, to re-stripe it, to sort of narrow it a little bit and to, you know, give you some safety, feeling of safety anywhere that
The illusion of safety.
Where the car should be and the bike should be on the other side or walking on the other side.
Yeah, no, I've biked down Darby. It feels much safer than some other streets. Well, that's interesting. I'm sorry to take us off on a segue, but I was just curious how that fit in. Thanks.
Mr. Penone, one of the concerns I have about the speed, particularly about speed humps, is that our, our ordinance is designed to examine a problem on a street and then fix it with speed humps. The problem is, as soon as you fix it with the speed humps, the road stops qualifying for that, especially for temporary speed humps that we, that we put up. Are, is there, are there towns that have committed to certain streets, whether they're right next to our, what did you call them? Feeder Streets or?
Other collectors.
Collectors, um, or streets that are on hills where, you know, permanent, you know, speed tables, speed humps are just, are factored into the road and it isn't a function of satisfying some standard and then continuing to satisfy that standard?
I, I don't know that I could tell you that either, either way. Most of our clients do have an ordinance, not all of them, like Marple does and most of the townships we represent. I, I don't know that I could, I could give you an accurate answer on that. Does anybody deviate from the standards in PennDOT? I can't imagine they have it. I mean, and again, they're just, they're recommendations. They're not, they're not, they're not the law. I shouldn't say it that way. They're not, they're not a permit requirement. But I, it's hard for me to believe in the state of Pennsylvania, somebody hasn't deviated from that. I'm sure, I'm sure they have.
Yeah, I guess the point I want to make, and then I can throw to you, Connor, is that I, I think there are cer, we, we had, we temporarily had them on Chestnut Avenue, on my street. If anybody wants to know all the benefits and all the burdens that go along with that, I'm happy to share them. One of the humps was literally directly in front of my house. That is, that's disruptive. Be aware of that. Every Amazon truck, every trash truck, every, everything that goes over that hump lets you know it's there with a great deal of volume. And sometimes even you feel it as well. On the plus side, um, traffic fell off precipitously, speeds dropped dramatically. As far as quality of life goes, it was, you know, that was a trade people were willing to make. It was not something we continued to qualify to do under our ordinance because once you cure the problem, there's, you know, the nature of these things is to, it, it seems to me the ordinance is set up in a way to address a temporary problem, try to break people's habit. But, um, especially for temporary speed humps, it's something you have to re-qualify for and, so I, I would like this board to consider, you know, to, to look at that and realize that that's, that's a, you know, that's a cure for an acute problem. The question is, we have to decide as a board, as a matter of policy, are there, are there streets whose characteristics, whether it's their proximity to collectors or to major arteries, whether it's their topography, Avon in my neighborhood is a perfectly sample street next to mine, a major long downhill run, and it's between two major roads, between two collectors, one wouldn't have it for it. So the question is, do we, um, you know, do, do we consider the, the permanent designation of some of these roads as roads that require traffic calming? And do we accept the consequences, which is the diversion of traffic into collector, back to collector roads, which mean they stay crowded and/or possibly state subject to speeding? Um, or diverting traffic to the next road that becomes a problem road in, in the township? And sought firsthand, obviously on Chestnut Ave. So I, I, I speak from some experience. I don't know the answer. But I, I, I do know that, that it's a major policy decision that we really need to, to talk about and come to a conclusion on. Connor?
And I can add a little, a little empirically and just from experience, the stuff you're mentioning is dead on. I mean, there are, nothing's perfect. There are noise issues. Sometimes there's almost some purpose noise issues that we've seen. Putting near people's driveways, I mean, when you're in a tight neighborhood, there's going to be near a driveway. That gets, that gets to be tough, quality of life tough. We've, I mentioned, like I said, we only have the four permanent ones. And in Harford, there are towns that have substantive, that have more. I know Aston has a lot of, a lot of permanent speed humps. So it, it's, it really is an, almost like an anomaly at a town. And, and once the permanent one goes in, we don't go in and measure and say,
Right.
It worked, we're taking it out.
Right.
At least we haven't. And typically that's not done.
Right, whereas the temporary is.
Yeah, they get a little bit different.
But there's a lot of.
The new time issue too.
But there's a lot of the streets where, where, where everybody will ask for it, but then they'll say, well, I don't want that in front, in front of my, my house.
Well, I have, I, I've got a, I've got a simple solution to that. You've got to have, you know, if we have to have 80 or 90% buy-in from all the people on the street, when they sign that sheet, it says at the top, by signing this sheet, I consent to the hump being put in front of my house. Okay, that's, that is a, that is a very important element to this.
And then, and then it's like everyone, like after a week, I know there's been, been streets where they, why, why I wanted it, but then they ask for it to be gone. So then, because it was too, too annoying. And when you go to shop up at the, uh, Manoa, you go over that one bump and that's like, takes, takes your car out.
Yeah, I just, I go around those like a Formula One racer. Miss them all, which I'm sure violates every rule they have. But I, I will say this, it was not, it, it was still the collective, more than that, almost unanimous view of the street that despite the noise, um, uh, they were, they were worth having. We were as one street removed from county line. And as a street that was under major construction and had terrible, terrible ruts in it, you know, windward for a long time, people would get right through the light of county line and then remember, oh, I know what's ahead of me. And they'd veer down Chestnut or they'd veer down Avon. And, um, so, you know, we had speed tests that probably, you know, qualified under the, under the more relaxed standard. But, you know, that's just, there are, there are roads throughout the township that are, by their location and by their topography, seem to be places ripe for permanent, whether it's speed humps or whether it's tables or whether it's the, um, call them chicanes or, 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 or narrowing. Uh, it, it seems to me that we should, we should give that very serious.
A lot of good success with narrowing in certain locations. That, that top of Vermont and Warrior was, was always a, a very difficult and very, one of the more dangerous areas. And we narrowed that and knock on wood, it's definitely been safer.
Wasn't that also done on, um, off Darby across from the, um, what's now the Reserve? Wasn't, wasn't that intersection reconfigured so that you could only go one direction and not the other?
The park side, yeah.
Right in, right out only.
Right, right in, right out.
Straight across. That was more about the redevelopment of that reserve and, and the traffic coming out to prohibit people from going straight across.
But how do, how does, you know, changing things into one-way streets or diverting traffic in that way, how does that work? Is it effective?
It's, it's, I, I personally would say that I find that to be one of the really more difficult things because, and that, that picture behind Manoa Shopping Center is a great example. You put one-way traffic on one street and if the cars are going to go somewhere else. Now, the, the Vermont Road one, we were fortunate enough when we, when we took Warrior and we made that, we really made it one-way. We just stopped you from entering it from Vermont Road. That effectively put more cars on a, on a collector road. But what we real, what happened behind Manoa Shopping Center is that one-way street effectively put more cars on the next residential street. It's, it's, it's a challenge. One-way grids are a challenge.
Isn't that how Brennan Drive dumps into 320, only one way? Go up the hill, but you can't go left?
I don't know.
Thinking about it.
Mr. Brennan, you took Brennan Drive, did you say?
Where Brennan hits 320.
That's, that's two ways here.
Is that two-way?
Yes.
My own neighborhood, North Aronamick, there's, there's been do not enter signs and, you know, thoughts about one-way grid. It gets tough because you just take them off of one residential street and put them on another. One-way's tough.
But here's a question.
One-way requires a lot of thought.
Here's, here's a question. If you're taking them off of one residential street and putting them on to another, that's one thing. But what if you came up with a plan? Let's say you had a neighborhood that had two collector streets on either side. You're just diverting them to the collector streets.
And that's what we did. That's what we were able to do. The devil's in the details. That's what we were able to do with Warrior. We kept them off the residential, didn't push them on the adjacent residential, Friendship or anything, and kept them on Vermont. So, so that would be the intent. One, any one-way grids, any one-way, you'd want to make sure you don't inadvertently negative impact somebody else. And you do avoid the cut through and, and try to keep people on the collectors. Which again, we're not trying to beat up the collectors. They're built for more traffic.
Right.
They're often, they can be signalized. They're wider.
And there are certainly a lot of people who rot in traffic on Eagle Road between Aberford Road and, and, and Westchester Pike who would be pretty upset if they thought about us taking steps that diverts more traffic on the Eagle Road. So, you know, the question is, do you take steps that don't reduce the number of cars on Chestnut Avenue, but they will reduce the speed of those cars, you know? Uh, as opposed to just making it, as opposed to diversion? I mean, those are two very different things and have very different consequences.
And remember, right in the first slides, two goals of traffic calming, right? Slow them down and, and reduce cut through.
And diversion.
Exactly. So, yeah, that's exactly it. And that's part to get to a little bit one-off. That's why we, we spent a lot of effort collectively trying to make our thoroughfares as efficient as possible. Got a lot of cars in Harford Township. Got less people and a lot more cars than back in the seventies. 10,000 more people lived here in the seventies and the number of cars is, is exponentially greater. And we try to keep those roads, the Westchester Pikes, the Route Ones, the Eagle Roads as efficient as possible. But you see it. I mean, there are certain rush hour times when, everybody sees it, when you just got a saturated road network.
And then, I mean, and another problem is really nothing we can do about it, but I mean, we, on our major roads that go through our business districts, we have no common parking lots and, and singular entrances and exits. Instead, we have 60 or 70 cuts in the curb between, between Darby and, and Lawrence. And that just, uh, that just makes it worse. Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Penone? Mr. Penone, uh, if you would like to, do you want to move on to the next topic?
Sure. Let me just grab my, give me a minute to.
Sure.
Get out of this one. And back to the beginning. And let me grab, give me a minute, I'll grab my stuff.
All right, take, actually, take your time. I, I'll, I'll interrupt and just ask if any commissioner have any updates to give on commissioner committees? Hearing none, uh, we can cross that one off. Chief, you're just done standby till after Mr. Penone finishes.
So, uh, let me introduce a staff member, Bridget. Bridget Gillan has, so the board remembers every once in a while I do this MS4 update, which, which is really boring. Bridget writes it. And since the day the MS4.
It's definitely the delivery, Bridget. It is not the content, as you're aware.
Yeah. So Bridget's helped and, and she's really been the, the, in charge of our MS4 program for day one. And by the way, throughout many municipalities in Delaware County, she's done a great job. She's also works very closely with Kelly and, and everybody on land development approvals and reviews and grading permits. So Bridget helped to craft, did a heavy lift on crafting the revisions to, to the ordinance, proposed revisions to the ordinance. So frankly, any really difficult questions, I'm going to deflect for this one and, and I'll be able to. But. So, so this, in the state of Penns, I'm going to give a little background. So in the state of Pennsylvania, we, we have revisions that were required to the stormwater management ordinance by the state. And in 2009, the best we can tell, our first stormwater management ordinance came in, in the late sixties, early seventies. Uh, predates, predates everybody, right? And that's, that's our first record of a stormwater management ordinance. Predates, predates everybody, right? And that's, that's our first record of a stormwater management ordinance. There was a time when houses were built without land development ordinances, without zoning ordinances and without stormwater management ordinances. So we adopted Haverford Township something back in the late sixties, early seventies. And it was updated and revised every once in a while, but in '05, the state of Pennsylvania did a statewide requirement for municipalities to update and revise their stormwater management ordinance. It was a pretty substantial change. And more frankly, much more substantial, which, which this, these updates, which are again required. But that, that '05 change was pretty substantial. And just, and I'm saying it just to, just to sort of tee up what we're doing now. But in '05, we, we have three requirements on how to manage stormwater runoff. One is what we call rate control, which is how fast the water runs off, the rate with which the water runs off a property. Two is water quality, which is you capture the water and clean it. And three was groundwater recharge. Those, all three of those changed significantly in '05. Rate control was changed a lot where your, what we call post-development rate became less than your pre-development rate. And water quality and recharge didn't exist in almost every ordinance prior to '05. So we put all that in, we presented it, we gave it, we brought it to the board. It was all filed in a very detailed, what we call an Act 167 study of the entire watershed, the Darby-Cobs watershed, which is what we're in. Very substantive changes. So now, 2022, the state is again requiring that their stormwater management ordinance be updated. Our stormwater management ordinance is in Chapter 78, which also includes erosion and sediment control. So as part of this update, the Delaware County Planning Department, and collaboration with Cedarville Engineering, again, restudied the Darby-Cobs watershed. They restudied the Darby-Cobs watershed and they made recommendations for changes, recommendations, requirements. By the way, it's still required. This isn't, this isn't nice to do, this is neat to do. Made required changes to the ordinance. So Delaware County Planning Department held two meetings. They were actually virtual meetings. I don't think they can go in person, but they were at least virtual. They were there for people like us, Bridget, not me. And, and also any resident who wanted to have public input or any stakeholder that want to have public input into what was called the model ordinance. So the planning department of Delaware County was creating a model ordinance to address the state's requirements. That was good. That was very good. We were very happy to have that happen. The, the model, the updated stormwater, our updated stormwater management, the DP was, was looking to have that, the state of Pennsylvania, approved and adopted by the end of this month, by the end of September. We've got, we ran into a little bit of a time concern because the model ordinance, which the county prepared, is still with the DP, hasn't been approved yet. So we, as staff, as the advisors, were reluctant to say adopt an ordinance that the state of Pennsylvania could change. So we don't, we're recommending against adopting new ordinance, but presenting a draft to the board. And then when the state comes back with any final comments, we'll then modify if it needs to be and then look for an adoption. And we will go in and tell the state of Pennsylvania that. And by the way, I don't think there's a municipality in Delaware County that's not doing the same thing. Everybody's dealing with the same thing. It's a good model ordinance by the county, the state just hasn't quite looked at it yet. So we updated it. Bridget, Bridget again, updated, redistributed it to staff on, on the end of July. And here we are with, with the updated ordinance. So I was gonna, it kind of, it kind of breaks into, and I'm not going to get too much into the details. The revisions break into three categories, for lack of a better term. What I, what I almost call like personal preference items, where the, where the state prefers certain language on, on definitions and certain like, like you can see right here in the first paragraph A, they're calling groundwater recharge, you want to call it infiltration. Well, groundwater recharge works, but they want to call it infiltration. So we're okay with that, right? We don't mind that the definitions have been modified. The purpose of the ordinance, the state of Pennsylvania, you can look right down there, 7815, if you really look closely, the purpose of your ordinance that we had from '05 and the purpose that the DEP is requiring, that we use, is very similar. So that's not bad. There's nothing really bad about that. We're okay with that. If there's anything that we thought would cause us consternation or problems, we would identify that. So there are some revisions of note that are technical. And, and I don't, I'm not going to get too much bogged down in because frankly, there, we find them all to be good and helpful. So they've redefined, they've further defined the definition of impervious surface. And one of the things that the DEP added, and we were doing it by policy already, the DEP would treat packed gravel or earth that people parked cars on through the years as impervious surface. And we've been doing that. So that's helpful. We think that's a good thing for the township of Haverford. The DEP's taken language about, about diverting flows from one property onto another, off-site discharges, and further, further identified them and further restricted, oops, I'm on the wrong page for that. No, I'm not. They've, look, we've, we've, our ordinance doesn't let you take, take surface water that's going over here and send it over here on someone else's property. The DP further refines it and further puts it in the ordinance. So again, that's good, that helps us. And then the last two I mentioned before, we now have infiltration and water quality requirements that were implemented in '05. They're good requirements. They had, the calculation of them was a little bit of a one-off. It was a little more complicated than it needed to be. The DEP is standardizing the calculation for the water quality and recharge requirements. And they are, made them very similar. And even better, frankly, most of the applicants we see now are already doing what the DEP's requiring. So all those technical steps that are in here, we see as good. They're all helpful. There are two that I want to point out that are, if cumbersome is the right word, but that, that will have impacts. So when somebody does a development in Haverford Township, our, our ordinance requires an as-built plan. Harvard Road's a great, a great, a great example, right? Harvard Road, the developer, and in that case, we ended up, the bank. We ended up having to get an as-built plan. As-built plan is regarding, you survey the property, you survey the improvements and you say, yes, the inlet elevation is X, the curb elevation is Y, the road is, is this, and the gradings, the grading matches. You compare the as-built to the design and you make sure that they're in general conformance. Sometimes they deviate for a reason, but you make sure they're in general conformance. We even do as-built, we require as-built as simple as a lot of times on infill development with, at the foundation level, to make sure the foundation isn't inadvertently installed in the wrong place. This ordinance, again, not, the state wants as-built plans now for the stormwater management facility for any impervious cover improvement of 1,000 square feet or more. We do not recurrently require that. So if somebody's doing a addition, somebody's doing a patio, anything that's over 1,000 square feet, as-built plans are required. Some ways it's great because then somebody else will confirm that it was built in accordance with the plan, which is important. But it will put a little bit of a burden on the applicants. The other, the other item that's included is the inspections. So as, as the board knows, because we've talked about it in the report, in our annual reports, we have to do inspections. We, the township, has to do inspections of stormwater managed facilities. We have to do X amount of inspections over a 10-year period. That is funded by those who build the facilities. That is revenue neutral for, it's intended to be revenue neutral for Haverford Township, just like building permits are. And it's, it's, it's our collective job to go out and inspect those facilities and make sure they're still operating properly. And, and nobody inadvertently made a change that negates the operation of it. COVID put us, frankly, COVID has put us a little bit behind on that, but we're in a catch-up mode. The DEP in this ordinance now wants those inspections done once a year for the first five years, up to the 10 years and then every, every three years to the final 10 years. That's a big change because it was three times over 10 years. Now it's going to be, it's going to be six times over 10 years. And the other thing, which at first frankly, I thought was a little cumbersome, was that they want the facilities inspected after a 25-year storm. I know the perception is we get a lot of 25-year storms. There aren't a lot of 25-year storms. Today's storm wasn't even a two-year storm. So to go out and inspect the facilities after a 25-year storm, might not do it for the next 15 years, you might do it in the month, right? So that one I thought was a little less cumbersome. But annually, each year for the first five years is going to be a little cumbersome. We can do it collectively, I'm saying we, I mean, and, but I just want eyes wide open for the board.
How is a 25-year storm defined? How's a 25-year storm?
Volume of water and duration. So like the two-year storm is 2.8 in 24 hours? The two-year?
2.3.
2.3? And how many, what's the five, what's the 25-year?
Five something, maybe six something, yeah.
Yep, yeah. So it's about six inches of rain. That's a decent amount of rain.
Yeah.
Like, we don't see it, we do see it, but it's, and the durations in there are also.
Well, August 20.
That's a big part of it too. So, but that's, that's the definition of how the, the DEP defines them. So, so where we are is, is again, we made a very conscious decision not to ask the board to adopt the ordinance without the model ordinance approved by the DEP. I feel that that's, I think collectively we feel that's the best action for the board. We'll, we'll wait on the comments on the model ordinance, make any changes we need to make. Any comments at the board or anybody that you want to have make comments on it? If we can, I would suggest you get them to Dave or Dave and I. And we can certainly follow up on any comments or thoughts that are in there.
But Dave, the bottom line is, we're going to need to, I mean, whatever DEP says that we need to do.
We have to do.
We have to do.
Yeah, yeah. We could, now, the nice part about the whole collaboration with the Delaware County Planning Department and Cedarville Engineers and the stakeholders is there's been pushback on things that, that may have seemed a little heavy-handed, unreasonable. This board won't remember, but the, the first ordinance was requiring stormwater maintenance for maintenance milling overlays of roads. I mean, that would have, that would have been difficult to do, well, that would have been almost impossible. So there's been a lot of collaboration on, and if there really is something that we're required to do that we think is unfair, we could cross that bridge with the state. Like I said, again, the, it kind of breaks into three places for me. Definitions, which are, which are kind of enhancement, improvement, a lot of personal preference. The technical part, which I kind of, which I think is fair to say, we kind of like, we think it's good. And just those couple ones I pointed out that are, that if, have to be done. You know, we got our eyes wide open on it.
And do the ordinances, depending on what watershed you're in, have to be more stringent?
Oh, yeah. Yep. So we're in the Darby-Cobs watershed. If you're, we don't have any V, exceptional value or high-quality stream, that makes, so we don't have any of those. They're in there, the ordinance, but there's no requirements for that with us. If you're in the Crump Creek watershed, some of your thresholds go a little bit lower. If you're in the Brandywine, I think they, I think the same thing, they go a little bit lower. And it's, and there's a logic to that too, because the watersheds were modeled. And we have release, we have release rates different in just our township. And the watersheds have different release, release rates. And that's over some very sophisticated modeling of all the watersheds. But there's, it's not, it's not, there's some logic to the different, to the different criteria and different watersheds, there's some logic. Hey, there's a, some areas you want to release the water to the waterway as fast as you can, get it out of the way before the water comes from, from way upstream. I mean, there's those type of modeling of a waterway. It was well thought out. The 167 studies were very detailed studies. That was the basis of the '05 and this update.
I have a quick question. You talk about measuring the rate of the water flowing. Are there permanent measuring instruments installed in various creeks around the township or how does that, how's that done? And I'm sorry to ask.
That's okay. No, no, it's a good question. We, it's the rate of runoff from a site, so that's calculated. So if, if you've got an acre of grassed ball field and you decide we're going to now turn that into a shopping center, you have a rate of runoff and a, what we call runoff coefficient that says, hey, this is how much water comes off of a grassed field. Because this is what goes into the ground, this is what evaporates, and this is what comes off. And then we have a rate of runoff for, for a paved, paved surface. Because nothing goes into the ground and not very much evaporates. They're the two extremes. Then you've got like a wooded runoff, you've got a meadow runoff. So it's a calculated runoff rate to leave the property, post, pre-development and post-development. And that's a big basis of that '05 ordinance change because what the, most of the '05 ordinance change did is it said your post-development runoff has to be less than your pre-development runoff. That whole intent was because most of Delaware County, you know, my house was built in the thirties. Most of Delaware County was built in before and after World War II and there was no stormwater management at all. So the downstream places, the Darby's and Yaton, see that? So it's an attempt to try to catch up on the lack of stormwater management for 60, 70 years of building. I was very conscious. That was the whole intent of making the runoff rates. And also a part of why you captured water and recharged it, which we weren't doing before the '05 update, and why we cleaned the water. So a big part of that update, and like I said, that was a much more stringent update, was to try to make up for the, the lack of stormwater management that was when most of Delaware County was built. Certainly when most of Haverford Town was built.
Thank you. With regards to the, one of the sections that you made a reference to that was, I guess you described as more cumbersome, about having to get, I believe, an approval if, if you created impervious area over 1,000 square feet?
Well, that's already get, that exists for us right now.
But, so that rule exists now?
Oh, yeah, that exists now. We put that in '05. In '05, anybody who creates, it was, it was, the 1,000 square foot was, is that the inspection? Oh, the as-built plans. I'm sorry. That was for as-bills.
Okay.
Yeah. Today you have to do, build a stormwater management facility if you're putting in 1,000 or more of storm, of impervious cover. So newer replacement, by the way. So if you tear down a house and you put in a new house and it's got 1,500 square foot footprint and then another 800 for the driveway, you're over 1,000. So you must design and get permitted your stormwater management facility. What this ordinance does is says, when you're done building it, you got to go out and have somebody as-built survey it. So survey it and confirm that it was built in accordance with the plan.
Now in terms, okay, so it's after, after the construction's done, you get this done?
Yep.
And just, do you have any idea or educated guesses to the additional burden that puts on homeowners?
Hundreds, hundreds, not thousands, hundreds.
Hundreds, not thousands?
Yeah, yeah. It shouldn't be thousands. Because most of these are, again, we do as-bills for the large land, the land developments are ready. We already have that in there. What this is really going to change is the person who's putting a 1,500-foot addition on or the person who's tearing down a house and building a new house. And that should be, maybe it could go up to 1,000, but I don't even think so. We did the as-bills on Harvard Road, Dave, remember? They weren't, they were, they were for the whole development. And I think they came in at like 3,500. And that was a heck of a lot more stuff than, than what was done for a single-family home.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Brown, thank you. Chief, Iola.
Thank you, commissioners. Just as an update with all the rain we had in the early morning hours, besides some flooding in the intersections, we monitored the streets and the streams and we had no overflow except for some, I think, Powder Mill, Minowa, a little bit of an issue down there and the usual spot, but we had no damage from the rain. And I think any trees down there, not to my knowledge. We weathered the storm.
A couple, not too many.
Yeah, nothing.
Couple branches in line.
So, the monthly chief's report for August, criminal arrests 14, juvenile arrests three, traffic citations 185, non-traffic citations 24, written warnings 184, 468 parking tickets were issued. 400 East Township Line, we had a robbery at the Sunoco Station. Second call committed robbery in progress with a weapon. Two males fled after forcing him up the slot machines within the store. These are legal slot machines, by the way. Investigation is ongoing. This is a problem with these, all-night gas station, to have these games of chance, not just here, especially on Township Line, City Avenue, where you have a lot of back and forth coming from different areas of the, of the township and, and the city. I, I spoke last month at the, about the Westchester Bank being robbed on the 1200 Township Line. An arrest was made by Philadelphia and West Ocean, Philadelphia PD and the FBI. Burglary, 400 block of Valley Glen Drive. Police responded for a burglary, discovered entry was gained through the rear door. Jewelry was taken. Investigation is ongoing. Motor vehicle thefts, 700 block of Railroad Avenue. They, that was an attempt, they attempted to steal GMC truck. Victim found the steering wheel tampered and his wallet was stolen. 800 block of Railroad, they attempted to steal a Hyundai. Window smashed and steering column damaged, the vehicle was not taken. Westchester Pike Coles, victim reports losing her key fob while shopping. Westchester Pike Coles, victim reports losing her key fob while shopping, and the car was then taken. So my guess is, or what the investigation is showing is the fob was probably taken out of her pocket, her purse. Thefts from autos, 800 block of Penn. Backpack was taken from the vehicle. Victim says he locked the vehicle before exiting, but it was not forced open. Interrupted theft at 600 block of Dayton. Resident alerted police of subjects entering parked cars. One offender was wearing a yellow shirt and a red backpack, another had undone clothing. Both subjects said to be wearing COVID masks. They ran off towards Old Lancaster. After a brief foot chase with the police, they could not find them in the, in the area. 699 Glen Hill, which is the very place. Victim reports walking on the trail, returning to his parked truck. The window was shattered. Purse was stolen out of the car with numerous credit cards. 1305 West Chester Pike Ace Hardware. Cadillac converter was stolen from a box truck. 7,000 Parkview, which is the crack. Male wearing gray hoodie, gotten the passenger side of his gray pickup truck, flee the area after possibly breaking out a Honda window, I'm sorry, 2018 Honda Odyssey. Two separate vehicles reported canvas bags and some cash taken out of the car. 600 block of Darby Road, another Cadillac converter. 2300 block of Darby Road, another Cadillac converter. And 1,100 block of Westchester Pike Cadillac converter. Couple of bicycle thefts at the Wawa, 200 block of Oxford, unit block of Fairhaven. We had K-9 usage, 400 East Township Line at the Sunoco Station, where I just mentioned K-9 Jango did do a, conducted a search for the air dropped articles with negative results. 600 block in Nellis Run responded for a burglar alarm. K-9 Jango did a sweep of the house with negative results. At 200 Mill Road, which is the high school, in the construction area, was, it was forced open. K-9 Axel was deployed to full building search with no, nothing found there. And fraud cases, we have 15 fraud cases involving mail thefts. So it's, it's expanding, getting worse. And we had a couple requests. We have now added all the mailboxes to our website. It's listed in this report also. But if anybody wants to look at them, they can go on the police website, on their press releases, and it's marked on there on the frauds, and list every mailbox that has been tampered with. But keep in mind that the post office on Township Line has been hit multiple times. The outside mailboxes. So I'll say once again, lock your vehicles, don't leave personal articles in the vehicles where they can be seen or stolen. And when you're mailing something, walk into the post office and put it in the mailbox inside the post office. I know, you know, people say it's, it's difficult what you want to do, but thousands and thousands of dollars are being stolen. The banks make it right, but this, this is really, really big business. So it's, and they're hiring people, we find they're hiring people to do the thefts. And then, you know, they could get a couple of bucks and then the money goes to God knows where, so.
Do you know, are they, the post offices in neighboring towns, or is it the same problem?
Yes, it's all over. It's not just us. It's up, it's not, I'll say it's not even along the main line area in the other police departments. It's just, it's a countrywide thing. And, and the, the, I don't want to even say how they do it because it's people ideas, but when you think about what you could use to drop in a mailbox, it's sticky and pull mail out is pretty simple. Postal authorities are working on it. Originally, it was keys that were out there. Now they're using all their methods, just reach in the mailbox and pull stuff out. So we have made some arrests. And I think a couple of meetings ago, I reported they were from Brooklyn, New York. So you can see where they're traveling from, come down to different areas to do the thefts.
So this isn't a case of somebody smashing the locks? This is them like?
No, they're actually going inside with a syringe and the old-fashioned fishing method and pulling stuff out. It's very easily done. And people put, still mailing a lot of checks. You know, people don't trust sending it through, through their bank app or things like that for various reasons. And, you know, they grab those checks, you write a $50 check, and next thing you know, you got $5,000 taken out of your account.
I have a quick question. You mentioned like four or five thefts from cars, and they were all kind of in the same area of Brenford. It was over two or three-day period. I just wondered if you had any other information or sense of if it was, why did it happen in two days? I think there were just a few.
Why did it happen in that time? I think that all happened on the, in the same date. Let me just check here, Commissioner.
So in that case, do you assume it's sort of a same group of people moving through a neighborhood?
Well, it's, it's, you know, the, the vehicle thefts go up and down, as I reported here, it's been going on for quite some time. We get, sometimes we'll get 25 a month, one month, and they went away for a long period of time, then boom, they started back up again. And, you know, we, you see people walking around in the middle of the night. It's like, what are they doing? Please stop them. Of course, everybody has an excuse. They're not doing anything wrong. You have to let them go. But we know that they're not just out for a 3:00 AM stroll because they don't even live in the area. So, but yes, it usually happens all in the same day. So if you're looking at one neighborhood, it's all one after the other. It's go right down the line, trying to handle this.
All right, thank you.
So Chief, it was calm for the Cadillac, the converters for like a month, month or two, and now it's?
Well, that's, that's big, too. I think everybody's seen in the papers, there's certain vehicles they're taking there from because the minerals in the Cadillac converter worth a lot more money.
Yeah, and that, and that gas state situation, that seems to be a target, target, target for years of, yeah.
They're just getting underneath, they're, they're, they're sold them off in a matter of minutes. I think I reported last month, it calls, the lady came out and saw she's sticking out from under her car, and we made an arrest, but had the soles all there and it's got it right off. So it's a broad daylight, by the way.
In broad daylight, they're taking a Cadillac converter?
Yes.
Are, most of these?
It's amazing that nobody sees that going on when it's happening. I can't figure that out.
You'd think they would hear it.
Right, serious.
Exactly.
Are the kind of converters, the cars where they're being stolen, are they parked on streets or in their parking lots or in their, in driveways?
Parking lots, one. Manoa Shopping Center, I think that was the Ace Hardware truck. And the other ones were on Darby Road. Most of them are right out along the roadways. So, but they had, they have been taken from driveways also. But they are targeting certain vehicles. If you do a little research online, you'll see it's, it's certain types of foreign cars are taking because of what, what they're worth.
Can you tell us which foreign cars? Or you're not allowed?
What's that again?
Can you tell us which foreign cars?
Hyundai's, yeah, there is a, particular brands are looking for Hyundai's, Hondas. We double check and see what kind they are.
Nobody wants?
Without time, things have, I'll, I'll finish the list of more of what we're watching.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Is my sob safe, Chief?
What's that?
Is my sob safe? Chief, last time you, you reported to us, you did, you did describe some pretty alarming home entries in the Merwood Park area. Did we get anywhere on that?
There wasn't a respite there, Commissioner.
Really?
Yes.
That's good news.
That was, that was up and down, using the rail line, getting off the BMW. And for most of those thefts were happening, just walk off from the rail line and break in the house. So there wasn't a respite there.
Thank you for that information. Does anybody have anything for the chief?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Okay, next week, we will be appointing, considering and then appointing an entry-level police officer. Next week, we will be doing annual, our annual evaluation of, and approval of the minimum municipal obligation that has been provided to everybody. In our packet this week, we do have a number of brand-new commissioners. So Amy, it may be worthwhile to do a quick.
Sure. The MMO stands for Minimum Municipal Obligation, which is calculated to determine how much the township has to put into the pension plans each year. So the calculation that's coming before you now, it must be certified by every municipality by September 30th, and that dictates what has to go in the budget next year. So to keep the plans viable. So the calculation is also largely dictated by an actuarial valuation, which is done every other year. We are currently in the 2021 valuation, so there isn't going to be much change between our MMO for '22 as compared to '23. It went up about $77,000 over last year, which was largely due to some changes in our collective bargaining agreement with the civilian employees. So that's really it in a nutshell. This will come before you every September. And as I said, this gives the public, it gives all the elected officials the calculation of what has to be in the budget for the coming year as you enter the budget season.
Does anybody have any questions for our finance director? Next week, we will also consider settlement stipulation of counsel in tax appeal case. That's something we've discussed in executive session. Also, ordinance P13, deed of dedication for Harvard Road. That will be a second reading. We will also be considering by ordinance, the sale of a cell tower at 9,000 Parkview Drive. That is the, that is at the Community Recreation and Environmental Centers, is that correct?
That's correct.
That will be our first reading. Does have any, anybody have any questions or comments on that? Ordinance number P16, second reading of a traffic ordinance, and P17 will be the first reading of a traffic ordinance. Any questions or comments on that? We will also, by resolution, be considering, I'm sorry, did I interrupt someone? We will also be considering Resolution 2275 of spending initiatives for our township's ARPA funds. Is that, Mr. Berman, do you want to give me 30 quick seconds on that?
Yes, I do. Give me one second while I turn to that page. So there are a number of projects, initiatives that we are recommending to use ARPA funds for. When those projects or initiatives are not included in the budget, we'd like to come to the board for a resolution authorizing us to commit those dollars. So the first one of those projects is a purchase of a new climate control unit at the Public Works Feature, Works Facility, featuring a UV air purification system, which is in response to the COVID pandemic. There's also a professional services study. This one's more interesting than any of the others, in my opinion. We are looking to engage, to implement a Brenford, a traffic study for pedestrian and bicycle safety in the Brenford neighborhood. And so we're starting with the Brenford neighborhood, and we would like to see this study be completed for all of the neighborhoods in the township, so that we ultimately have a township-wide pedestrian and bicycle safety plan that we can use to apply for grants. And that goes in line with pretty much everything that was said earlier tonight about some of the ideas we have for various streets. And so that, we're asking for authorization to commit those dollars. We want to work with the Shade Tree Commission and tree tenders on a tree planting along the West Chester Pike median. And so we want to commit some dollars to that. We would like to purchase up to 1,000 reusable shopping bags for promoting economic development in the township, now that we have the single-use plastic ban. We would also like to fund the Senior Citizens Open House and purchase some additional decorations for the business districts for the holiday.
Thank you, Mr. Berman. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I just would like to make a quick comment about the Brenford traffic study. Thank you, Dave, for advocating for that and for coming up with an innovative solution for looking at traffic safety and walkability for the whole township. I think we're in, there's no doubt that Brenford needs it, but I think it also provides a lot of different templates for how we might be able to look at these measures as a township. So without you thinking about it in that way and sort of starting out with this traffic study, we wouldn't be able to do that. So I want to thank you for that. You're going to help make things safer, more livable, and pedestrian-friendly as a neighborhood. So thank you for that.
Next on our agenda will be a reverse subdivision, resolution involving a reverse subdivision of two parcels, 516 and 520 Panmuir Road into one parcel. Anybody have any questions or comments on that?
A question. There was a recommendation from our engineer for a right-of-way or pedestrian easement along Panmuir Road. Was that included in it or?
Yeah, actually, again, so that was, it, it's a requirement in the, in the subdivision and land development ordinance. However, the property does have an easement, an existing easement along the rear with an existing pedestrian access that has routinely been used by, by the public. So the applicant was offering that instead of maintaining and creating sidewalks in the front where none exist now.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hart, your question answered. Anybody else have any questions or comments? So also, under consideration next week will be Resolution 2277, a subdivision of two properties on Darby Road.
Another comment on this one. Again, it's, there's no sidewalk recommended. And the, the argument for it is that there are, you know, we're on Darby Road, and there are no other sidewalks. But Darby Road is the only way to go west in the township if you want to ride a bike, walk, run. We're committing to not doing this at all. If, I mean, that seems to be the argument, well, we're never going to put sidewalks on Darby Road. So this is what we've done in the past. We did it on Haverford Road. We've done it recently in Brenford. We didn't put them in or near the Polo Field. So I, be aware of it.
Is it, Commissioner Hart, thank you, is the, has the planning commission or anybody made the recommendation and it's coming before us for a waiver?
They did make a recommendation for a waiver.
Planning commission made the recommendation for the waiver. Okay.
It was discussion. Again, the argument is that we're never going to put sidewalks on Darby Road. So I.
And we refer to Kelk, Kelk. Thank you. See me jumping out of my seat over here? That is a small portion of the argument. In this particular instance, again, there's a grading issue on that portion of Darby Road. A significant retaining wall would need to be built along the front edge of this property and would drop off on either side where the other properties wouldn't have sidewalks. So there really isn't an area to put a sidewalk at this point, just because of the grade. And then having to put it at that point, very close to Darby Road, where there was definitely safety concerns.
And it was waived for curbs, too, right?
Correct.
I think right there, it may make sense to waive it for now, and then we can explore other ideas. And I get what you're saying, Jerry, with that, but I get why there isn't any point to putting it there now. If it's just going to be like right there and then it's not going to go anywhere. But down the road, we can explore, maybe, maybe the ideas to make that more friend, friend, or more, like more friendlier with stuff. But right now, it might not work to put that there.
I haven't looked at this particular issue in the comprehensive plan, but in the comprehensive plan that's been, that's being put together as we speak, is there any reference to this issue? Is, one way or the other?
I mean, certainly you want to install sidewalks wherever you can to make any area more pedestrian-friendly and to, you know, get people off the streets and give, give the community a bit more walkability. In these two particular instances, one, the previous subdivision that we were just talking about already has a pedestrian walkway, just not in, in the front of the property where it would, you know, historically be constructed. It has one in the back. It already has a pedestrian easement. In this case, it's more of an issue of the actual grade and physical characteristics of the property, being a long Darby Road and not being able to provide sidewalks at appropriate slope to where they could be constructed in a safe manner.
I have a follow-up question to that, though, too, just sort of trying to figure out how the process works. It seems like the comprehensive plan would be the opportunity to articulate that we wanted to do that, or at least whatever comes from the comprehensive plan. Because I fully agree with Jerry that, or Commissioner Hart, that, you know, if we just keep saying no, we're never going to have sidewalks. So I don't, I don't see any point in making this the test case or, you know, for that. But we do have to put sidewalks in at some point if we're going to put in sidewalks.
We have been very strongly steering applicants towards not requesting that waiver, where, you know, their argument is simply, well, it's a sidewalk to nowhere. Whether, you know, some people like the sidewalk to nowhere and think it's just, you know, we'll get there eventually and you have to do it step by step. Other people, you know, think it's a waste of time. Regardless of which way you feel about it, you know, the commissioners are absolutely looking for not giving sidewalk waivers or waivers to construct a sidewalk if it's, if it's, if there's a reason that, if there's no actual reason that they shouldn't be constructed. In this particular instance. be constructed. In this particular instance, the topography of the property is just extremely difficult, and you also don't want to create an issue where you're building sidewalks and putting people into a dangerous situation because you created them.
I have a question.
Yes.
There was mention of some sort of retaining wall needing to be built?
In order to actually construct a sidewalk, because of the grade of the property. There's some significant steep slope right at Darby Road.
If a sidewalk was put in, a retaining wall would have to be added?
In order to stabilize so that the sidewalk would be able to be constructed, yeah.
But right now, they don't need to put in a retaining wall to build whatever they're going to build on Darby Road?
Not in the same way, not in the same level, no.
Okay, thanks.
As part of seeking a waiver, or as part of agreeing to seek a waiver, does the Planning Commission seek and get any fees associated with, with that?
The Planning Commission did recommend a, or that the, that the developer consider a fee in lieu of constructing the sidewalks for a more appropriate place in the township. We do not have an ordinance that gives you a fee in lieu of option for sidewalks. But that was a recommendation of the Planning Commission.
So, we do have an ordinance, right? And that's what they have to get a waiver from?
We have an ordinance that says that sidewalks shall be constructed where the, in the opinion of the Board of Commissioners, they are appropriate to be built.
And does the Planning Commission go into each one of these evaluations with the idea that we would think it was appropriate?
Yes.
So the Planning Commission makes the, then, then suggests to us that we not deem it appropriate?
I think that the Board has made it quite clear that they want the Planning Commission to make sure to absolutely evaluate based on the want of sidewalks and not the other way around.
Since we're discussing it, Dave, do you have any-
Kelk, do you remember the section of the subdivision land development?
160-5, something. I don't know the rest of the topic. Actually, although, it would be in the resolution now, wouldn't it? Here.
Sidewalk shall be required-
Sidewalk shall be required where, in the opinion of the Board of the Township Commissioners, heavy pedestrian traffic will result, or where pedestrians need to require such sidewalks. Sidewalks are required for any multifamily development. That's Section 160-5, deep in there.
160-5B4C, or maybe 10. Have them combined.
That ordinance of relatively, relatively recent origin. Did we do this in the last 10 years?
We did. I don't believe so. I think I, we did look into it, but then the comp plan got started, so everything got put on the back burner because all of that's going to be revised, just seemed, since we have an option there.
Does the comprehensive plan include any suggestions that this language be made stronger, or?
Generally, the comprehensive plan really shouldn't on its own make suggestions for changes in legislation. So, wouldn't necessarily make specific changes to language. But, I mean, certainly, when we talk about, you know, wanting to be more pedestrian-friendly and make things more walkable and adding more sidewalk, I absolutely think that language should be strengthened.
So, with regard to any kind of request for a fee, that is, that is purely voluntary?
Well, that actually sounds like a really good question for your solicitor.
So, the current state of the law on fee for waivers, you can charge them if there's not really actual hardship. But the question really is, you know, if it was a situation where they could put the sidewalk in and it'd be a sidewalk to nowhere, but they could do it, it's not really a hardship for them, that would be appropriate for a fee and waiver. And a lot of people do that. If you didn't want that sidewalk now, you can collect the fee and maybe use it to put in sidewalks at a later time. However, when there is an actual hardship and they cannot do it, then it's not appropriate to ask for a fee and waiver in that situation because it's really not their prerogative. They're not trying to skirt their other responsibilities. So, the question is whether or not there's a true hardship for this particular sidewalk. It sounds like there are some, some sloping issues that would make it economically unfeasible for the project to happen.
Furthermore, just with this development, this developer is putting in public sewer that the adjacent properties are going to be able to connect to because they are all upset. So, he's doing quite a bit, quite extensive, you know, public improvement that's going to benefit the surrounding properties. I almost feel that, you know, with the situation being that there is an actual hardship for the sidewalks, plus him providing these public improvements to these other properties, they're going to be able to connect into his line once it's all constructed. It seems like a little bit of give and take there as well.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments on this particular item?
Just a follow-up. As far as the hardship, in order to prove a hardship, though, would require a developer to go to court, or?
No, it's a determination. I mean, they, they will assert the hardship, and it would be up to the Board to determine whether or not that actually is a hardship.
The Board, the Board said there's not a hardship.
And you technically should not be granting the waiver. And if they could then appeal for a layman's appeal and saying, I had a hardship, you needed to grant that waiver, you were wrong to not grant the waiver, then at that point in time-
General cost of going to court for what the fee of a sidewalk would be, it seems. Maybe not worth the effort.
Well, we have a week to chew on that. Does anybody else have any thoughts, comments or questions about the subdivision of, at 4008 Darby Road?
Ms. Kirk, just to be clear, they are suggesting that there is a hardship. The Planning Commission is recommending that there is a hardship.
The Planning Commission absolutely did recommend a waiver be granted for the construction of sidewalks and curbs, yes.
Thank you.
Finally, not finally, does anybody else have any questions or comments? So, moving on to the next resolution, Resolution 2278, of '22, that is a designation of an agent for Winfield Drive. That is, is that for purposes of our-
That's for a grant agreement.
Okay. Want to give me 30 seconds on that, Mr. Berman?
We had previously filled out the documents that they provided to us, and we submitted them, and finally, their legal group reviewed them. This is at either Pima or FEMA, Pima, and found that they had given us the wrong documents to complete. I need a new resolution so that I'm authorized to sign the grant agreement.
Excellent. Thank you. This is something we've been working on for about a year now, is that right?
We've been waiting for this grant to wrap up for a year and a half, I think.
Okay. Oh, right. I'm sorry, it wasn't a year, it was August 20, right? Okay. Thank you, Township Manager. Moving on to, does anybody have any questions or comments on that? Moving on to purchases and contracts, next week, we'll be considering the purchase of Lenarc Fire Company Tower 34 Rotation Brake Gearbox Housing. We will also be considering the contract for the renovation of Freedom Playground. We will be considering a contract for chimney stacks and stucco repair for the Nider Hall Chimney. Does anybody have any questions or comments that would like additional information about those purchases? Those contracts are described in our agenda. Yeah, the, the Lenarc on the, the tower, is, is that the tower that's been out of service for quite a, is this the, the same piece that's rendered that tower out of service for quite a while?
Yes, the part is a long lead item, and I need the, I don't have the authority to commit the funding that's required. I believe it was, I'm going to say like $20,000. It's in your package.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I think it's like with labor and everything, it's a little under 24.
And I don't have the authority to issue a purchase order for that amount, so I need the Board's authority to do that.
So, is, is, are we at the, the point where the part is ready, we're going to pay for it, they're going to install it?
No, we're at the point, point to issue the purchase order to build the part.
And I, I guess, I guess where I, I have some confusion is when I look at this, I notice a lead time of 46 weeks. So, we have to wait 46 weeks from basically next week for this part?
Approximately. I think it's down to 40 last time we talked about it with the provider, with the manufacturer.
I guess, is there, was there a part ordered before it disappeared? I mean, I guess why wasn't this, because my understanding is this apparatus has been out of service for at least, if I recall correctly from emails, like six months or something like that?
Yes.
And I'm just curious why, why we didn't, like, why nothing was ordered until now, unless there was something that was ordered and got canceled? I don't know.
There was a, a lot of back and forth with the repair company, the supply company, early on. When they originally did the work, they thought they had corrected the problem. And when they dug deeper, they found that there was additional work that was needed. This part needed to be acquired. We explored other options with that supplier, and we asked them to provide a quote for the new part, and it arrived on my desk about a month ago. I, I don't recall what, I don't have the date in front of me, but, so I'm putting it in front of the Board to get that authority. I believe that our mechanics have spoken directly with the supplier and, and have been working from the get-go to have this part put in line to be fabricated.
Thank you. Do anybody else have any questions on that item or the other two items described herein?
Brian, just the $100,000 for Freedom Playground, would that, you know, where and would you-
Yeah, it's where and here. When we built Freedom Playground, it was some value inherent in it. We didn't put in, because it's that wood, the supports are degraded. The supports are ending, we're in place, a little beyond our, our faith. We went back to others, we should put it there. We actually went around the park, looked at everything, came up with a game plan. Actually, we had, probably $160,000, a lot of volunteers, we said, we'll back, we're going to have some horse stand there, and they're going to serve a while, and others can give us some.
And what we'd be putting, what we're replacing?
Well, it's more just replacing support beams, some, putting some inholds, and then some of the components, like styrofoam.
Okay.
The things that we can't just buy online.
Okay, thanks.
Are the telescopes still good? Do they still work? Good, good. I have a special interest in those.
That's usually what you're calling them.
Yeah.
Will the, will the part be closed completely during the renovation?
For about two weeks, the last week of September, first week of October.
Well, fortunately, we have Township Day in the middle of that, so that'll be a fine distraction while that's going on. Okay, does anybody else have any questions or comments on the remainder of these items or anything else for us to consider this evening?
I have a quick question about Freedom Playground. When was the playground initially installed?
It was installed in 2010.
2010? So 12 years later, we have to have major supports?
Which is, they told us we'll be building, that they would do it in 10 years. And we have had, well, Freedom Playground was built by volunteers. Each year, they did a work thing. COVID, that sort of popped, and the volunteer groups do over time, lose some of their steam because of it. So, we plan on doing a cleanup, or we'll do power washing and painting, more aesthetic stuff. This is more destruction. So, again, when it was built, they would have said that in 10 years, you're just going to have to do something.
And that's because they wouldn't, the supports were wood as opposed to this composite you're talking about?
Yeah.
Got it.
That was a decision made on call.
Out of curiosity, what are they saying about the materials we're using now? Are we coming back in 10 years, or?
Well, that's why we're saying we're going to try to use composites, so we don't have to, although, there's going to be other issues we can't deal with. Hopefully, for all these things. The neat part about Freedom Playground is built altogether. So, it's not like we can go in and pull one piece out and replace it. I'm going to get a part like Westgate where we can-
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Does anybody else have anything they'd like to bring to the Board's attention? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
We are adjourned.